Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Sarah Young. I'm the Director of Development with Schooner Adventure and this year's President of the Chamber Board. Thank you again for coming for tonight's double header of debates. We will have the mayoral debate right after we hear from the Ward Two candidates. We'll take a brief intermission and then start up again around 7:00 o'clock. So, thank you to the candidates for being here tonight. I'm sure we all really look forward to hearing from you. I also want to thank Gloucester Stage Company for hosting us. This is a wonderful venue for this. And for those of you who were here last night, I already encouraged you, but come back and see a play during the season. We're also really grateful to Cape Ann TV for recording the debates tonight, and they will be aired on Channel 12. I believe this one will air on Saturday. You can also find it faster than that on YouTube. And also to Essex Radio for providing the sound. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Bob Visnick. Bob grew up here on Cape Ann. He's been a practicing attorney in this area for 20 years. He is the Rockport Town Moderator, a past President of the Rockport Rotary Club, and a member of the Cape Ann Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Council. Bob recently retired as the Lieutenant Colonel in the U.S. Air Force Judge Advocate -- sorry, Advocate General Corps. Bob, thank you, and I'm now going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you to the Chamber for arranging my passport and visa so that I could leave Rockport to come back to Gloucester, my hometown, to moderate this debate. And thank you to the candidates, Ken Hecht and Joe Giacalone. And I've asked the candidates ahead of time, and they've agreed to allow me to address them by their first names. Prior to starting this debate using a sophisticated system, we drew randomly the order in which they are going to be seated and answering the first question, and then that order will rotate. And Joe will answer the question first, but Ken is going to give the first closing statement. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question, and then 30 seconds for a follow-up. Carrie McKenna is going to be our timekeeper, and she's going to hold up a green card when there are 30 seconds left. Then she'll hold up a yellow card, and then for the last 10 seconds, and then a red card, and I'll allow you to finish your sentence, and then there is a buzzer under your seat after that. My discretion will give you additional time for elaboration if I believe it to be necessary. And as I said earlier, you have 90 seconds to make a closing statement. We have a second debate this evening, so we're going to try to wrap this up promptly at 6:45 PM. And without any further ceremony, we'll go right to the first question. Everything work?
Yeah.
Okay. And this question will start with Joe. Do you support the rezoning of any portion of the Fort neighborhood or modifications of the current designated port areas, boundaries, and restrictions? And please explain the rationale for your answer.
Thank you for the question. I do not support rezoning down the fort. Simply, the residents down there are happy the way it is. Businesses down -- excuse me, the businesses down there are quite happy the way it is. As far as the designated port area, again, that seems to be working as well. I know that they had to do an overlay for the hotel, and the hotel seems to be working very nicely because the city is getting meal tax and room taxes back in very large numbers, so that, I think, worked out well. I wouldn't change zoning down the fort at all at this point. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you to the Cape Ann Chamber and for everyone coming out tonight. I feel like I'm being interrogated, you know? I can barely see you. But thanks for coming. This is a good crowd. With respect to the zoning and the DPA at the fort, I want you to understand that I'm a person who does a lot of research. I'm an engineer by education, and I just really study things quite a lot. I've knocked on a ton of doors at the fort. I've had meetings down there with the residences. Some of the people want the zoning changed. Some other people don't want the zoning changed. It's a very passionate place, very passionate. And I just haven't -- I had -- I was referred to Anne Malloy of Nettoons Harvest, who I met with, who's very passionate down there. And so I really feel the fear of the people in the fort of what could happen if it was rezoned. And I learned a lot from Anne Malloy in terms of what the fears are. Some of the fears are if the AMI -- oh, okay, I won't -- I'll go into the DPA. In terms of the DPA, it's a similar story for me. I really -- I'm involved in the zone, the rezone in East Gloucester because I'm on a planning board. But in terms of the DPA along in the downtown area and at the fort, I'm also doing research on that. On the one hand, we've got the fishing industry we want to have happen. On the other hand, we literally had a building fall into the ocean, so I'm trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. Thank you.
I've also met with people down the fort, businesses as well as residents. Overwhelmingly, they don't want rezoning down there. Yes, there are a few people who have -- may have plans that they may want to develop down there, but the vast majority of the neighborhood would like to see zoning kept the way it is.
So I want to be clear what my position is, is that I'm -- I have two ears and one mouth, and that's the proportion that I want to use things right now. So I really want to gather the information. It's very passionate. I think the percentages of people in the residential area that don't want the zone, the fort rezoned, is larger than the percentage of the people that want it rezoned. So -- but I'm going to be very contemplative and make sure I know all the facts and ask the opinions of all kinds of people before I weigh a vote on that. Thank you.
Okay, and this one is back to you, Ken. Gloucester's economy is becoming increasingly reliant on visitors and the dollars they spend at our inns, restaurants, shops, and attractions. Local room and meal tax revenues are a significant part of the city's budget. Please give us your views about the city government's role in supporting Gloucester's visitor-based economy.
Thank you. I'm thrilled that there's a revitalized tourism group for the city. There's a lot of fine people in that group, and they're actually funded with a percentage of the rooms tax now. So there's a lot of good work ahead. I want to really participate with them. I have had conversations with Doug Silva of Topside, who's on that group. I've been invited to one of the first meetings. I was unable to attend, but I'm very excited about that. As you probably are aware, my wife and I, Patty, live at 191 Main Street, which is the Trident Gallery Blue River Diamonds Building. We live and work on Main Street. We have retail tenants. And so I live and breathe downtown and the vibrancy of downtown. In addition, I'm working on, maybe you've read about it, the West End Artist Studios. So we're putting artist studios above jalapenos. And I'm happy to say that as of today, it looks like we've got five of the seven studios committed in like 14 days, which is ridiculous. It's a part of -- it's a really cool building, and it's also very affordable. So I'm very focused on the downtown. I'm very focused on leasing space. I've been in the commercial real estate for a long time, and I think that having the storefronts leased up, I'd love to also have a more definitive plan for when yachts come in, when -- what do you call it? The tourism boats come in to the harbor, that we can have a more established program to get the tourists right into the downtown and direct it from the seaport. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Sure. Tourism is increasingly becoming an important part of our economy. I think one thing maybe we would try is -- an idea is to have an app for tourists that visit our city. An app that's going to tell you where things are, restaurants, shops, museums, jalapenos. Also give you traffic conditions. You know, as we all know, in the summertime, the beaches, parking at the beaches is atrocious, and you either get there right away or you don't get there. So maybe we could inform people via this app that says, you know, "Good Harbor's closed, but State Fort's open. Maybe you want to try there," or some other place. So I think we need to come up with innovative ideas to keep tourism alive, but hopefully we find a balance between tourism and rest of our industry.
I think that, piggybacking on Joe's comment, when people come to our town and they go to Good Harbor Beach, and then they're done with the beaches, 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, and they're like, "Well, let's go to Woodman's." "Oh, let's go downtown." So I really think that we lost a little bit of a capture element where we can have signage at Good Harbor on the way out as you exit the parking that says, "Here's what's going on in our downtown. Here are the restaurants. Here's the shops. Here's the map and how to get there." Because I think what we're doing is we're letting these people come to town to our beaches, and then we're kind of letting them escape before we have a real good shot at them. We want them to go downtown and shop and eat and have a good time. Thank you.
All right. And in this question, the candidates are going to ask a question one to the other. And so we will start with Joe.
Ken, as a developer in this ward, how do you reconcile your potential conflict of interest on zoning for the harbor and zoning on Main Street with the needs of the ward?
I am so glad you asked that, Joe. If I wanted to make a whole bunch of money and come and rape and pillage Gloucester, the last thing I would do would be run for City Council. That would be the goofiest thing I could possibly do. So in terms of conflict of interest, if in the end, if there ever was a conflict of interest, so far, I've developed -- redeveloped the bank building. Everybody loves it. We're doing jalapenos for artist studios. Everybody loves it. And with our purchase of the Cape Pond Ice Building, we are one of the only buyers that I'm aware of that actually saved Cape Pond, and now my partner is a joint venture with Scott in Cape Pond Ice. So if we didn't have a deal where part of the deal was Cape Pond Ice lived and survived, our fishermen would not be able to -- a lot of our smaller fishermen would not be able to do business in Gloucester. They'd have to go get their ice elsewhere. So that was a deal that Meredith Fine and everybody else at the table was very excited about, that we were able to save Cape Pond Ice the company while also trying to figure out what to do with Cape Pond Ice the building. So I would say, just so you can get to know me, what I'm about is finding the intersection of a feasible project and what's good for the community. And I think that's been born out of the projects I've done, and if I do any further projects, that's how it's going to go as well. And if there's ever any scent of conflict of interest, I recuse myself or even more. Thank you.
And now, Ken, your opportunity to ask a question. Would you like a follow-up? Sure.
Thank you. So I'm not sure you answered the question quite completely, but if you're going to have any kind of projects in the ward or the city -- well, in the word, I'm sorry -- and you say you're going to recuse yourself, every time you recuse yourself, Ward Two's left without a voice on that vote.
I'll give you the opportunity to answer that.
Yeah. I mean, there's nine -- there's nine people on the council. There's seven people on the planning board. Oftentimes, there's not a full boat, so I think that this happens with some frequency. And I don't have plans to get into many situations where that's going to be a necessity to have myself -- to recuse myself. So I really -- that's a top priority for me, is to really look at that. I really think about it. I think about it hard, and it's important to me to be well thought of by my citizens. It really is. It's important to me. Thank you.
Okay. And Ken, now is your opportunity to ask a question to Joe.
Great, thank you. Joe, we've spoken in front of a lot of citizens, and you've said many times that you plan what you plan to do when you're elected. Prior accomplishments are the best predictors of future achievements. Aside from heading up the Downtown Development Commission and being the Ward Two delegate for the Gloucester Democratic Committee, City Committee, please share with us what significant accomplishments you have achieved for the betterment of Gloucester and its residents.
Thanks for the question. I'm sure, as you know, I've lived my whole life in Gloucester. My father was a City Councilor for 14 years. My cousin is currently our state representative, and I've worked on many of their campaigns. I've worked on campaigns for Bruce Toby, John Bell, and others. As far as significant accomplishments, I think being involved in the community and learning what their issues are and listening to, you know, their problems and concerns is probably my biggest accomplishment.
If you would like to follow up on that?
So, Joe, did you want to enhance that a lot with any -- did you want to enhance that with specific accomplishments, or?
Okay. Dr. Cynthia Beerly from the League of Women Voters has been working with high school students on a civics project, and the students have developed a question to ask this evening. And I don't know that we have a student here because they're very busy working on their homework, but I will have Cynthia Beerly ask that question.
Unfortunately, they didn't show up. Marijuana was legalized in Massachusetts a year ago. What is your position on retail sale of marijuana in Gloucester?
And this one is first to Ken. Retail marijuana in Gloucester.
Thank you. I'm on the planning board, and we have tackled the medical marijuana issue, so that's sort of behind us. There's an approval going on for that facility. That's going to be constructed. The thing that scares the tar out of me about recreational marijuana is not the actual marijuana itself. Today, you can grow pot plants in your backyard and smoke all you want, so that's really -- that's just already legal. What scares the tar out of me and the hundreds of things I'm finding out about recreational marijuana is the gummy bear type products. So you can have -- I've got a friend in Colorado that has -- I've asked him to help explain this to me, but a dose of THC might be nine milligrams, and in a gummy bear, there might be 35 milligrams, four times sort of an adult dose. So it's all about the number of milligrams. So what I'm really worried about, and one of the things that I really want to focus on, is what are the edibles? How does that work? How do we keep our children safe? It's a big issue for me. I think that if you look at how many bushel baskets of marijuana are there within three-mile circle of where we're standing now, it's going to be many bushel baskets. So medical marijuana that's smoked is already here. In terms of the spotting of stores, I don't want any stores on Main Street. I don't want any on Washington Street. My personal opinion is that's the kind of product that people will go out and seek. So I really don't want people driving down the streets here and having marijuana stores all over the place. And I'm very happy that we are taking our time with the moratorium till the end of next year so that we can really study this issue. Thank you.
Joe?
I think we agree on this topic. As I said at the public hearing, I also agree that the moratorium was the right way to go. The state is just now starting to figure out guidelines and how to support cities and towns as marijuana shops are -- retail marijuana shops are going to start popping up. I think it's great to have a pause so they can tell us and guide us. And there's all kinds of issues that are going to come with this. Zoning issues that are going to come up with this. Law enforcement issues that are going to come up with this. How many shops do we want? I don't want to see them on Main Street either, but where do we want them? How many do we want? Those kind of things, we need guidance from the state, and until they can give it to us, it's best to pause and take a look at that.
Thank you, Cynthia. Please thank the students for us. Okay. We're starting with Joe on this question. Joe, what are your views on the Fuller School redevelopment proposal generally and specifically the Y's proposal, YMCA's proposal, to work collaboratively to build affordable housing downtown at their current site in Ward Two?
Thank you. I'm glad I was asked this question. I generally support what's going on at Fuller School. I think Gloucester deserves a world-class YMCA. I think the YMCA deserves a world-class YMCA. I think we all agree that we are sorely in need of housing in general, or especially in need of affordable housing. And I think in today's paper, we had Ken and I's candidate profile, and I think I may need to clarify my statement a little. I'm not sure it came out the way that I meant it, but I do support the Y on Middle Street for their -- to have affordable housing there. There certainly are issues that they would need to reconcile before it's a viable project. And generally, I would like to see developers held to the 15% affordable housing that they have in the ordinance, but I think this is a unique situation, and I think it's more important that we have the affordable housing units, and we'll worry about rewriting the ordinance later.
Thank you. I'm going to cover a lot really quickly, so stay with me. So if we build -- you have to build affordable housing that's affordable, okay? If we make the developers do the 30 units up at Fuller, there are going to be something called 80% of AMI, Area Median Income. Because Area Median Income is a scale that includes Boston and Cambridge, Area Median Income is crazy. Let me give you an example. 100% of Area Median Income for us here is $103,400. 80% of that is $87,000 -- $82,700, meaning that a family of four, that is the income that they could qualify for those units. So you put those units up at Fuller, people making $82,700 and less will qualify for those units. That is not our issue. Our issue is providing the housing for the people that are really in the 30% to 60% of AMI range, the people that really need the housing. Let me give you an example. For a family of four, that range would be 30% of AMI would be $31,000 of income, would be the highest you could qualify, and $62,000 would be the 60% AMI number. So we need to really focus our efforts and not worry about as much about what the developers are supposed to do. We really have to keep our eye on the price. We have to develop units that are in the 30% to 60% AMI range. And that's really -- that's where the bulk of our problem is for our people, and we have to make sure we get people to understand that. Thank you.
And this question is going to be addressed first to Ken, and it is about everybody's favorite topic, charter reform. The Gloucester City Charter serves as a kind of constitution for our city's government. It has not had a comprehensive review in over 30 years. Do you agree or disagree that charter reform is necessary? And if you do agree, what would your belief to be our top priorities?
Thank you. I read the charter this afternoon. It was really exciting, I have to tell you, you know? Fifty pages of -- anyways, in the charter, it's got to be revised every year that ends with zeros. So every 10 years, the charter is supposed to have been revised. I'm not sure that occurred in the zero -- the last zero year, but every zero-zero year, the charter's to be revised. So it's to be revised in a little over two years from now, or about, let's call it three years from now. I -- in all the doors I've knocked on, and all the people I've talked to, from the fort to the hill, up to Georges, and all throughout Ward Two, I've never had a single person ask me, "Oh, my God, that charter's killing me. You know, we got to change the charter. It's killing me." However, I will say that within the charter, probably the things that need to be looked at, I think particularly with the mayoral term, right now, of course, we all know the mayoral term is two years. I have learned, after running for an entire year for this office, that running for office is a lot of work and can take your eye off the ball of governing. So in my mind, the most important thing that we'd want to consider, although I don't -- the doors are not being broken down by this, is can we have the mayoral electoral period be four years? I think that would be something to consider. I've also -- I also agree that overlapping City Council and possibly Planning Board -- well, there's no Electoral Planning Board, but City Council have overlapping terms would be a smart thing for continuity. Thank you.
Joe?
I agree with everything you just said. I think it is -- I think we do need a charter review. I think we have to have a charter commission to go over all this stuff. The City Council certainly has no time to go through those kind of things, and that's the appropriate venue. I also agree things like the mayor's term should be four years. Same thing like the president is four years. You know, after the first years, you're still trying to find the pencils. You know, then you have a year, you're going for reelection again. I think four years is appropriate for the mayor. Again, I agree there may be some -- something we can do with the City Council elections to overlap. Maybe the wards are a different year than the at-large. I'm not sure what that is, but that's what they'll look into and give suggestions to the City Council. I think most of the candidates did a radio interview with Josh Arnold, and one of the questions was, "Do you support a student government day where the students -- one student will be the mayor for the day, then the City Council president, and on and on?" And I didn't know until I read, you know, until the interview, that that's actually in the charter. It's supposed to happen every year. It's in the charter. I didn't know that. It doesn't happen every year anymore. Just another thing that a charter review will help bring these things to light.
All right. And in this question, the candidates are going to ask a question one to the other, and so we will start with Joe.
Ken, as a developer in this ward, how do you reconcile your potential conflict of interest on zoning for the harbor and zoning on Main Street with the needs of the ward?
I am so glad you asked that, Joe. If I wanted to make a whole bunch of money and come and rape and pillage Gloucester, the last thing I would do would be run for City Council. That would be the goofiest thing I could possibly do. So in terms of conflict of interest, if in the end, if there ever was a conflict of interest, so far, I've developed -- redeveloped the bank building. Everybody loves it. We're doing jalapenos for artist studios. Everybody loves it. And with our purchase of the Cape Pond Ice Building, we are one of the only buyers that I'm aware of that actually saved Cape Pond, and now my partner is a joint venture with Scott in Cape Pond Ice. So if we didn't have a deal where part of the deal was Cape Pond Ice lived and survived, our fishermen would not be able to -- a lot of our smaller fishermen would not be able to do business in Gloucester. They'd have to go get their ice elsewhere. So that was a deal that Meredith Fine and everybody else at the table was very excited about, that we were able to save Cape Pond Ice the company while also trying to figure out what to do with Cape Pond Ice the building. So I would say, just so you can get to know me, what I'm about is finding the intersection of a feasible project and what's good for the community. And I think that's been born out of the projects I've done, and if I do any further projects, that's how it's going to go as well. And if there's ever any scent of conflict of interest, I will recuse myself or even more. Thank you.
And now, Ken, your opportunity to ask a question. Would you like a follow-up? Sure.
Thank you. So I'm not sure you answered the question quite completely, but if you're going to have any kind of projects in the ward or the city -- well, in the word, I'm sorry -- and you say you're going to recuse yourself, every time you recuse yourself, Ward Two's left without a voice on that vote.
I'll give you the opportunity to answer that.
Yeah. I mean, there's nine -- there's nine people on the council. There's seven people on the planning board. Oftentimes, there's not a full boat, so I think that this happens with some frequency. And I don't have plans to get into many situations where that's going to be a necessity to have myself -- to recuse myself. So I really -- that's a top priority for me, is to really look at that. I really think about it. I think about it hard, and it's important to me to be well thought of by my citizens. It really is. It's important to me. Thank you.
Okay. And Ken, now is your opportunity to ask a question to Joe.
Great, thank you. Joe, we've spoken in front of a lot of citizens, and you've said many times that you plan what you plan to do when you're elected. Prior accomplishments are the best predictors of future achievements. Aside from heading up the Downtown Development Commission and being the Ward Two delegate for the Gloucester Democratic Committee, City Committee, please share with us what significant accomplishments you have achieved for the betterment of Gloucester and its residents.
Thanks for the question. I'm sure, as you know, I've lived my whole life in Gloucester. My father was a City Councilor for 14 years. My cousin is currently our state representative, and I've worked on many of their campaigns. I've worked on campaigns for Bruce Toby, John Bell, and others. As far as significant accomplishments, I think being involved in the community and learning what their issues are and listening to, you know, their problems and concerns is probably my biggest accomplishment.
If you would like to follow up on that?
So, Joe, did you want to enhance that a lot with any -- did you want to enhance that with specific accomplishments, or?
Okay. Okay. Dr. Cynthia Beerly from the League of Women Voters has been working with high school students on a civics project, and the students have developed a question to ask this evening, and I don't know that we have a student here because they're very busy working on their homework, but I will have Cynthia Beerly ask that question.
Unfortunately, they didn't show up. Marijuana was legalized in Massachusetts a year ago. What is your position on retail sale of marijuana in Gloucester?
And this one is first to Ken. Retail marijuana in Gloucester.
Thank you. I'm on the planning board, and we have tackled the medical marijuana issue, so that's sort of behind us. There's an approval going on for that facility. That's going to be constructed. The thing that scares the tar out of me about recreational marijuana is not the actual marijuana itself. Today, you can grow pot plants in your backyard and smoke all you want, so that's really not -- that's just already legal. What scares the tar out of me and the hundreds of things I'm finding out about recreational marijuana is the gummy bear type products. So you can have -- I've got a friend in Colorado that has -- I've asked him to help explain this to me, but a dose of THC might be nine milligrams, and in a gummy bear, there might be 35 milligrams, four times sort of an adult dose. So it's all about the number of milligrams. So what I'm really worried about, and one of the things that I really want to focus on, is what are the edibles? How does that work? How do we keep our children safe? It's a big issue for me. I think that if you look at how many bushel baskets of marijuana are there within three-mile circle of where we're standing now, it's going to be many bushel baskets. So medical marijuana that's smoked is already here. In terms of the spotting of stores, I don't want any stores on Main Street. Build a wharf, you know, at Roger Street, build a wharf of material that goes out about two-thirds of the way to the water, very nautical in theme, very sturdy timbers, and allow the fishermen's easement to remain, which goes along the, it's a hockey stick, that goes along Gloucester House and then goes in front of the docks. So once we have this platform built, there's parking below, and it can be used for all different kinds of things. And this kind of project will cost maybe two and a half or three million, I actually think it's viable. Could be restrooms, could be visitor center, could be umbrella bar, it could be skating rink, which is, many communities are putting that in, and I think it could be a really focus for our downtown, and I think it's economically viable, and we're going to get that done. Thank you.
All right, two more quick questions, and because of the time, we won't have any rebuttals, but I'll go right to the next question, which will be addressed to Ken. Given the challenges facing small businesses, especially retailers in downtown Gloucester and in the city's neighborhoods, what would you do to improve Gloucester's small business environment?
Thank you. Along Main Street, I've, I've walked in with Mike Hale, and we, Mike Hale, who's head of the DPW, many of you know, he's got a master degree in urban planning, and we've, we've developed a list that's about three pages long of the improvements that we do. So one of the first things I would do is work with Mike Hale and either some architects in town who are value-talented, or we could hire an architect to create a plan for downtown all the way from the west end to the east end, and really revitalize that. I think that the lighting in the trees is just incredibly important. When I first moved here, we had all these, the lights in the trees, it created such a warmth, it was so beautiful, and then the building inspector, rightfully so, said, "You guys can't be plugging those things all over the place like you're doing it." So I'm chasing a solution of what we're going to do for lighting downtown, I think it's critical. Then also Roger Street is something that we can really improve upon. Roger Street historically has been the rear end of Main Street, it's the rear end. And unfortunately, people come from the Fisherman's Statue, they drive past tallies, and they're driving down Roger Street, and they're looking at all this crazy stuff, I-4C-2 and some of the back end of the other buildings and going, "How far is Rockport?" We don't want that. We want them to turn into Main Street and enjoy our downtown. So I think that we're about five to seven buildings away in terms of the facia of the buildings, the CVS building, the Citizens building, we can talk to those owners, and I can speak with them in their language, to get them to make Roger Street also have a face and have it be a retail street. Thank you.
I think it's important to listen to the business owners to see what they need. I would support the chamber in having their best practices forums with the business owners, I would coordinate with the relevant boards and commissions, Downtown Development Commission, the Tourism Commission, Traffic Commission, even the Waterways Board, anybody that has, that can give positive input to, to the best way to support the downtown businesses, small businesses. And also to Ken's point, as the chairman of the, of the DDC, we're working on those lights downtown. As you know, for years, we've had lights in the trees, which look, they really look nice, but apparently it's, it goes against the electrical code in the city, unless there's, excuse me, unless there's an outlet for each tree, we can't have it that way. It's difficult and expensive to find alternative ways. I have been working with a lighting engineer who has given us some ideas that we can, we can work on and see what best fits. I don't want to spoil the surprise, but I'll tell you that every year, the DDC puts the Christmas wreaths out at Christmas time downtown, we'll still do that, but this year, we'll be able to light them because we'll have new heads on the decorative, decorative light poles downtown.
Thank you, and a related question is, your vision overall for Gloucester's working waterfront? And this one is starting with you, Joe.
So I think the best thing for the working waterfront is to keep it working. We need to support the businesses down there. Gloucester is, Gloucester, the fishing industry in Gloucester is, is not gone, it's not as vibrant as it has been in the past. The Gloucester boats go out a day, two days at a time, but the catch they bring back is fresh and they get a better price for them. We need to support that. Another way we can support the businesses there is that, is to help them modernize the infrastructure. I toured the Mortellaro Lobster Company down there, and they just built, they just modernized their pier down there. And if you stand on their wharf and look at the beautiful work they did, and it's, you know, it's taken climate change into account in the, in the engineering, I'm not an engineer, but, and it's, it really is looking towards the future, but if you turn left and you see the decrepit falling down pier, that's probably going to fall at some time, you can see that those are the kinds of things we can do to help marine industrial businesses.
Some things I have figured out, I feel, affordable housing, this one I don't quite have figured out, but I'm working on it. So on the one hand, we, I want to help our fishing industry. I've been to the seafood show, I went to a three-hour meeting at the Sawyer Library where Noah and the fishermen were there together for three hours, and it was very civil, you know, it was all about how to count fish. I talked to Al Cottone, who's, you know, head of one of the groups in the fishing area here, and I said, "Alan, I'm trying to figure this all out," and you know, he told me, he goes, "You'll never figure it out." I'm like, "How can I not figure it out? We're going to figure this out." So on the one hand, you've got buildings that have been vacant for years, you've got a site on the waterfront that's been vacant for 50 years, and one building recently fell into the ocean. On the other hand, we want, I want to help the fishermen, not only to maintain but to grow, I want our fishing industry to grow. So how do I begin to do that? I want to understand the supply-demand characteristics of the market, meaning what is the demand for waterfront buildings, and what is the demand for waterfront slips, docks? And from there, we can project, you know, if, as, as sales go up and fishing recovers, what is the capacity we need to build into the system to accommodate that? And then begin to design an overall solution for the waterfront that makes sense, but making sure that the fishermen have, have a booster in their tank in terms of being successful. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'm going to give you a moment or two to gather your thoughts, and then we'll have you make your closing statements, and Ken, you will be first when we do that. All right, looks like you're ready to go.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Everything I've done my entire life has brought me to this point, I'm ready for this position, whether it be eight years of football, or 10 years of scouting, or 13 years of coaching, or being an officer of my fraternity and last year, winning the Alumni of the Year Award, I'm not doing this out of, like, I just want you to know who I am, and that I get things done. I am driven to get things done, good things, positive. I give back to the community, and frankly, since I've been here, being on the planning board, Housing Production Plan Committee, contributing to the Downtown Development Commission, I've really enjoyed it, and I'm working on projects now, before I'm a councillor, like getting security cameras at Burnham Field, like the Mosaic project at the Americo Building on Roger Street. You know the big ugly building by, you know, across from Walgreens? We're going to put Mosaic up there, it's going to be beautiful, make that ugly wall a little bit better looking. I'm working on a mentor program for our young women in the middle school and the high school, and the STEM program. Being an engineer, I put myself through engineering school, I really am interested in helping our young women to get more excited about technology and science and math, and that's, that's something that I think that we can get some really good speakers lined up and really get our young women excited about. So these are the kinds of things that I'm working on already, and I can't wait to start to work for you. And not only do I ask for your vote, I ask that you talk to your friends and your neighbors, because I would like you to talk to them about this guy Hekt and what we're going to do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to the chamber for this forum. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for watching at home. I'm running for Ward Two City Council because this is my neighborhood, it's where I grew up. Ward Two has always been about people caring for each other, especially our seniors. This is the reason I still live here with my wife, Sophia. I know it is like to work hard. Growing up, I was a paper boy for our neighborhood, and in high school, I worked for Cape Ann Market as first a bag boy, then a stock clerk. I graduated from Gloucester High School and then Salem State University with degrees in political science and music, and now work as a receiver at Shaw's. I look forward to working with you, and I ask for your vote on New Year's Day. Thank you.
And gentlemen, I would like to thank you for your volunteerism, which of course helps make our, our Cape Ann run, and we need people like you to step up, and thank you for this long debate season, and I wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you.